Okay Supervisor, good to go.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm now going to call to order the April 27th, 2021 Regular Town Board Meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Delarada. Councilman Delarada. Absent. Councilman.
Here.
Councilman McGraw.
Here.
Councilman McPartland.
Here.
Supervisor Saya.
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice for all.
I said Mr. Poynter, he was like, "Yeah, no, I remember the email."
I'm going to look for John.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. First, we have the minutes of the March 9th, 2021 Special Town Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, with no changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the March 23rd, 2021 Regular Town Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing no changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes of the March 30th, 2021 Special Town Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing no changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Okay. Well, next, the town board is honored to receive a presentation this evening by our esteemed town resident and Goleb Corporation Chairman Neil Goleb. He'll be delivering a presentation on strengthening the future of Schenectady. Mr. Goleb, thank you so much for presenting to us this evening, and the floor is now yours.
Well, thank you all very much, and I really appreciate you taking the time to let me share with you. As many of you know, I've been pro-Schenectady as far back before 1990. It was my dad who first tried to get some stuff going before he passed away. And back in 91, 92, he had said to me, gee, this new President Union College Roger Hall might be an interested ally if we could figure something out. But he got tired of watching the place where he grew up just going to hell downtown, as we all know. Our downtown was really pretty much of a mess, and he tried, couldn't get anywhere. And he asked us if we would try to put something together. So Roger and myself got together with a few other people, George Robertson at the time, and we tried to do some things in Schenectady because we felt like it was time that we turned things around. We set up Schenectady 2000, and the goal of Schenectady 2000 really was to create a new image, a new system, a new place for Schenectady, and to do it by the year 2000, and hopefully to have a funding source in place so that we could do something to resurrect Schenectady. And so we worked very hard between 1993 and roughly 1999. And in 99, Bobby Farley, who I think we all know, son of Senator Hugh Farley, Bobby said to me in an offhanded comment one night, he said, "Neil, we may be able to do something if we could get a state mandated public authority." And I said, gee, but he also turned, excuse me, the expression, but he said, "It would be a bitch to do it. It would be difficult to do." And I said, "Well, talk to me about it, and let's see what we can do." And so we talked, and as a result of that, the Metroplex Development Authority idea was created. Metroplex comes from Dallas-Fort Worth, which is called Metroplex. And I've been going there for many years for meetings and so forth. And I really, really caught my eye that the Metroplex idea was something that was larger and bigger and more up to date, and I kind of liked the idea, and so that's what we called it. Bobby brought this, he wrote the legislation, and he brought it to Hugh Farley and then to the President of the Senate, and also across the aisle to the other side of the aisle. And before long, the Senate had passed the bill, and the Assembly then got the same bill, and they passed it. And in 98, 99, Governor Pataki signed the Metroplex Development Authority legislation. And this is what has really led us to where we are. Just going back a little bit, it was way back in 1970, if you will, that GE started to decentralize their business in Schenectady, taking out many of the complexes that were here and shipping them out to other parts of the country. And it was from that point on that we began to see a downfall in Schenectady. And up until roughly 1970, our downtown was pretty much intact. But when you look at pictures of 1980 and forward, you know, the downtown had really gotten pretty ugly. As Ray Gillan described it, when he got here, it was the ugliest downtown in New York State. Thank you, Ray Gillan. And so we had formed this effort, we had created, we ran a number of programs. The Schenectady 2000 Gala was on the Union College campus, and it started to bring back some continuity to Schenectady and some pride in what we're doing. What I'm trying to do is to create pride back in Schenectady. Schenectady, I would say, and I've done an awful lot of studying and reading in the past number of, past couple of years and so on, but we've forgotten what made us famous. This was a city that had so much development and so many things happening. For what it's worth, we became the electric city between 1900 and roughly 1935, when all of the home devices were created, the electrical devices, the toasters and refrigerators and all that kind of stuff. But from that point on, GE Development was in all kinds of, all kinds of other things. And it continued, and it continued to grow. And we had some inventions in the city that were pretty terrific. I think one of the things that really outlines what I'm talking about, I had a conversation with a gentleman who is now the manager of WRGB, and he and I have done a number of things together. And I think you all know that for some 30 years, 35 years, I did the MDA telethons on CBS over Labor Day weekend. And I have a pretty good relationship. And I said to him, I said, "You know, WRGB's former management decided that Schenectady gone so far downhill that they changed," and I wonder if you all noticed, "they changed their call letters to CBS Albany." Have you all seen that? Well, I have to tell you, every time I saw that, I really got aggravated because it was in 1940, the GE engineers developed television. And Schenectady WRGB was the very first television station in the entire world, in Schenectady. And I said to him, "We forgot what made us famous, and we've never talked about it." And he kind of looked at me and said, "Wow, you're right." And so these are some of the things that sit in our background that we've never taken credit for. Fortunately, MYSI, and over the past couple of years, I've been working with Dr. Gould at MYSI, first as their Strategic Advisor and now I'm the Chairman. But the reality is that most of all of that energy that was developed during those years GE Development, that MYSI has so much of that material available, and we've just never been able to find a good way to use it until recently, when we've come up with what we call a future plan, and we have figured out some things, and I'll share that with you in a moment. But in any event, when Ray Gillan got here, things began to change. And what a phenomenal job he and his team did as they brought the county and the city together to actually work together. It was a beautiful sight to see our government working together to create issues. And so we've come, clearly, we've come a long way in the past few years. You know, we had this term, "The Electric City." Well, we're no longer the electric city than the man in the moon. That passed a long time ago. We are now something different. And let me, and I'm going to show you in a few minutes what I'm talking about. We're a different place, and I'd like to introduce a new vision, and a vision which has earned and really deserves a new reputation for Schenectady. You know, wouldn't we all be proud of our hometown? I've created a plan that'll give us a new reputation. We have pillars in our community. I call them pillars. They could be assets, they could be strengths. And each one of these pillars has matured in the past number of years, maybe some more slowly than others. But they've matured to a level that elevates the community. Each has an individual impact. Together, the impact is pretty awesome for the total community. And each stands on its own. And Schenectady now possesses a vitality that makes Schenectady different. And I hear that as we talk to people that are coming to Schenectady for our restaurants and coming to Schenectady for Proctors and our entertainment. People are coming to Schenectady. They're not going to Albany. They are for some things, but a lot of people are coming here. So let me talk about some of the things that I've seen and give you an idea, give you my idea of my perspective. First, I see Schenectady developing as a city of medicine, center of medicine. I've been with Ellis Hospital for God knows how many years before 1990. I've led three of their campaigns to add on to the hospital. And most recently, I'm a chairman of the new campaign. And as you probably all have heard, that the Roswell Park Oncology Center is coming to Schenectady to team up with Ellis Hospital. Now, this is the first time in the capital region that we have had an oncology center. Yes, other hospitals do cancer things, but this is an oncology center. Probably, according to the U.S. News and World Report, rated number 13 in the country, which is pretty awesome for Schenectady. Meanwhile, at Ellis, we've opened a really fantastic emergency center. The cardiac center at Ellis is pretty terrific. And interesting that the doctors from Schenectady Cardiology and Albany-St. Peters have merged, and now they're one unit, so Schenectady is now getting the best of both St. Peters Cardiology and Schenectady Cardiology. And so that's, you know, that's pretty exciting. When you look and see what we have on our campus, Sunnyview, which is now run by St. Peters, but Sunnyview has been part of the Ellis campus for years. When you look at Bellevue Women's Hospital, Bellevue Women's Hospital has been a name in this community for so many years. And early in the 2000s, I became chairman for about eight years, and then we merged with Ellis Hospital. And Bellevue Women is still considered the number one OBGYN in the region. And there was some talk of St. Peters and Ellis merging, but like so many other things during COVID, that's kind of taken a little bit of a backseat. It may happen, it may not. But as I said to Paul Milton at Ellis one day, I said, "Paul, there's a much bigger story here than meets the mind's eye. If you look at what we are, we've been a hospital, Ellis Hospital. I think it's time that we have added so many things to Schenectady that we ought to change our name to a medical center and become our own brand, whether it is the Schenectady Regional Medical Center or the Schenectady Metro Medical Center, tying in with Metroplex, that maybe it's something that we can do that will elevate the whole community." Then I learned, then I learned that Orthopedics, Northeast Orthopedics is building a big facility in downtown Schenectady, Ortho New York, rather, Ortho New York is building. And they're bringing in some other major disciplines to Schenecty, medical disciplines. And so I'm thinking to myself, you know, Schenectady is going to become a center of medicine. And I'm asking that we look at it that way. I've talked with the board at Ellis. They like the idea of becoming a medical center. And I've, of course, communicated with others in the community, and it seems to be an idea and a concept that's well accepted. Okay, next item. Schenectady obviously has become a center of business and business development. Metroplex has been the business engine of the entire capital region. And when we researched, and we did a bunch of research in Schenectady, people in Schenectady told us, "Schenectady is open for business." And that's one of the reasons we see so many new things going on. In the years that they've run Metroplex, we've probably added over 900 new projects in Schenectady and probably approaching 1,000 over these past 15 years that we've been, we've been working. Metroplex has become a place where people go for business. Many of the developers now can come and get an open eye to doing things in Schenectady. Schenectady has the largest industrial park system, one of the largest in the whole state. And when you look at Glenville and Scotia and Rotterdam, there are just huge parks that are going on. When you look at the building in downtown, we've rebuilt the whole downtown. The major streets have been rebuilt, and so many things are so much different. We have a brand-new railroad station, for example. And so Schenectady really has been identified as a city that's open for business. And we need to promote that in a way that people understand. We've also become, you'll enjoy this one, a center of higher education. Think for a second, what am I talking about? A center for higher education. Well, Union has been here, obviously, for a very long time. At Union, I'm on the board there, we've just opened $100 million integrated science and engineering facility to add to their, to their, to their facilities. And we've also, in the past few years, we've gotten Clarkson University here, and we, of course, have the State University of New York. Used to be Schenectady Community College, but it's now State University of New York. And what's also happened, when Clarkson, as a university, focuses on engineering and training science teachers, and when they realized they were across the street from MYSI, they approached MYSI about integrating or merging because they train science teachers. And MYSI trains children, and we use teachers at MYSI, and this is a perfect marriage for them, to Clarkson, to train their teachers with this combined arrangement that could happen. Again, that was slowed down by COVID, but that's something that we think is really going to happen. And as Chairman of that board, working with Gina Gould, I don't know if you know her, but Dr. Gould is one smart lady, I got to tell you. So we've become a center of higher education. We've also become a livable, affordable housing community. Our downtown has been regentrified. I've talked to a number of real estate people, and one of them said, "You realize how many parkways and boulevards we have in this community? And on either side of those parkways and boulevards, we have beautiful homes. We have the GE plot. We have the stockade downtown. We have an assortment of living." And what they all say, it's Schenectady is probably one of the only communities that's affordable and livable with a downtown that people really like to walk in. And once we get over COVID, you know, some things will hopefully get back to normal. But we've become a very livable, very livable community. And so, and re-energized and regentrified, really great. We've become a center of recreation. When you look at what Mohawk Harbor has brought and the marina has brought and all of the parks and recreations throughout the county, this has become an area. Look at Central Park. We have 27 parks in greater Schenectady, 27. I never realized it until Mona mentioned in detail how many there were. And look what we have in Central Park downtown and out in Niskiuna on River Road, the parks that we have, pretty spectacular living here. As I said, we are a center of recreation, which we really weren't before. Another major thing is we've become a major center of entertainment. Have we looked at ourselves that way? We have become a destination location. With the casino, with Proctors, with the marina, and all the other things that are going on, people are coming to Schenectady. There have been built in Schenectady five new hotels right near, let's say, half a mile from the casino and from Mohawk Harbor. Five new hotels. And what that's done, it's created a really new business that gets stabilized at the casino and their main ballroom because we can now bring in conventions, small conventions, medium-sized conventions, because there are plenty of hotel space within walk, almost walkable distance. And so we've become really a destination for that kind of conventions going on in our community. We're also a center for the golden years of invention and creation from GE. And as I've said, all of that stuff is kept at MYSI. And we created a future plan for MYSI, which includes two things. One, we realized with all of this wonderful stuff, we've got thousands of artifacts there. And what we did was, just before COVID, we had created a traveling national exhibit. And these national exhibits are entertained by museums all over the country. Let's say there's a couple hundred museums, we've looked into that. And they're all eager to get new ideas to show to the people in their community. We had one ready to go when COVID hit, and we had tested here in Schenectady and got very good marks. These traveling exhibits, once they get set up, they will live in the community for three or four months, and we might earn as much as $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 for these exhibits. So what we've done, and we have 30 different ideas for MYSI, and these things can be an income stream for MYSI for years to come. And Clarkson loves this idea because it will help to bring their name to other areas of the country. And so the other part of the future plan for MYSI is cooperating and working with Clarkson. And that certainly for us is a big deal. And really elevating all of these great things and sciences that we've brought to Schenectady. The partnership also brings STEM education to Schenectady in a way that we've never had. Gina Gould and Tony Collins, President of Clarkson, were working on creating hubs around the, around the area, hubs of education for STEM education. And this will be a very strong integral part of that relationship. We also still have here GE Global Research and Development. And I was surprised to learn in my reading that back in around 1980, GE toned down what they were doing. And even though MRI was, you know, was invented after that time, but they've kind of toned back, but they're still here, and they're still going to be productive. And certainly, that gives us more stuff to be able to use. Schenectady is actually a hub in that I-90, I-88, and I-87 all merge in the Schenectady area. We have the only new railroad station in, you know, in the state of New York here in Schenectady. So people can, will be able to shoot up from, you know, the big city areas. And as many of the big cities, we're finding, and we're hearing every day that people are traveling to areas where they're much more livable, we, Schenectady, become one of these livable areas. And so that's what I'm talking about in terms of that we've got a whole new level of excitement in the community. And that's what we're, that's what we're trying to bring. We'd like, you know, we'd like to develop a new saying for Schenectady. You know, we've thought about it. We've tested a number of ideas. We kind of like the idea of Schenectady Metro because the word metro means bigger, larger, more going on. We could, you know, we could use city of invention, but it's limited. And metro means something much larger, and so we've been playing around with that idea. We can see ourselves working with the Visitors Bureau, which is part of the, part of the county because they bring people to the community. But now I think what, through these programs that we're talking about, we're adding more meat to the program, we're more adding more things that make Schenectady a place. I'd like to be proud of my community. I ask people, "So what's Schenectady famous for?" Nobody seems to know. "What happens in Schenectady?" Nobody seems, ask your friends who you see in different places. "What's neat about Schenectady?" Right now, I don't know if any of you know Bill Patrick, Carmel Patrick's husband. Bill is a writer. He's a professional writer. He teaches writing. And he's been working on a book about Schenectady's Renaissance for a little over a year. He and I have been working together, and he's doing all the writing. I'm not doing any of that. He's doing it all. And he's interviewed probably 125-ish people in the community getting all sides, all views of what's happened in Schenectady since 1980. The book starts, by the way, the book starts with the big fire downtown. And I think we all, who have been here for a while, will remember that, that big fire that took place at Peggy's or next to Peggy's, but that's where the book starts. Interestingly, the name of the book, the name of the book is called Metro Fix. And it has a view of this community. There's a lot of stuff in there about GE and what GE did and how they managed their business and the people, and all of the people that came from other countries that came here for jobs with GE. It's an educational treat, and I'm looking forward to that coming about very soon. He's looking to get that out in sometime in October, November because that's the best time of year for books to come out. And so we're looking to do a lot of things. We're going to do some digital marketing. I've hired a public relations firm who's done a lot of good stuff. And so we've got some good stuff here, and I'm very excited about it. I could go on and on and on, but that gives you the gist of what we're talking. I want to rename Schenectady. I want to give it a new reputation. If this book goes over, it'll help to give Schenectady a new reputation. We're no longer the electric city. We're a city that's involved in a lot of other things. And that's why I must have gone through hundreds of different names for our community. And I finally end up, I say, "The only thing that really gets the whole thing in one word is Schenectady Metro because it means bigger, larger, more exciting." And that's kind of my presentation. Happy to take a few questions if somebody's got some, if there's time.
I don't have a question so much as I was, it was fascinating to learn that this was the birthplace of television.
Oh, my God, yes.
I had no idea.
Most people don't.
Yeah.
Most people have not a clue. The first place in the whole world, the television. And I said this to the guy who runs WRGB, and he kind of looked at me, and he said, "Good God, where have we been?" And I've said, you know, you know, "Don't forget what made us famous." That's an expression that I got from a book a few years ago. "Don't forget what made you famous." And we have in Schenectady. It's time we elevated what made us famous, but add all these other things that we can be very proud of.
Neil, you and I have talked about WRGB and the television piece of this a couple of times, and I'm so grateful for you elevating the discussion around that. As the former Chair of SUNY Schenectady, I'm very proud to say the first place they broadcast is on that campus. It's hidden away. Most people don't even know it's there. So I'm hoping a picture or something in the book, Neil, because it really, it needs to be seen to be believed.
I'm sorry, picture of, Denise, I didn't hear you.
The first place where television broadcasts.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
On the SUNY Schenectady campus.
Okay. And by the way, for those of you who don't know, it's downtown, right where the bridge crosses into Scotia. Schenectady Community College, where Van Kroler Hotel was, is on the left. And the original WRGB is on the, was on the right, which is now part of the community college. But that's where the original college was, where the original station was.
I want to thank you, Neil, for all the time you've put in for the community. You have been one of the pillars of this community, and thank you for all of your, the time that you've put in. You talk about the television. I can remember my grandfather speaking about GE and TV. And my father would tell the story that my grandfather would say, "Someday, at television, it's going to be like a picture that you hang up on the wall." And that was probably 70 years ago or more. My grandfather knew that that's what GE was working on, and the things that would come, and, you know, the great things from this community.
Like, I can remember in, it was back in 1948, my mother contracted polio, unfortunately. And I can remember Dad got a TV set to keep her entertained. And I can remember that little, it was an Admiral Television in those days, that big. And yeah, we go way back and lots of things. But there's some great stories about this community, and I'm hoping that the book will help to elevate Schenectady's perspective. We'd really like to get it on the New York Times Bestseller List because in a way, it's, you know, how did Schenectady do what it's done? How did it accomplish rebuilding the downtown and all of the things that have been accomplished there? How did it happen? Not just one or two people, but lots of people were involved. And we didn't get big sums of money from the government. Most of the money came from developers. And yes, Metroplex gets one-half of 1% of the sales tax, which they use beautifully. And by the way, for your information, they are investigated by the state and state authorities that look at these. and state authorities that look at these. And they always get glowing grades for the way they run their business. Glowing.
Seth, Councilman Delarata is muted and he cannot unmute. He's by phone. So Seth, if you could do that, that would be great. I don't know if he has a question for Neil, or he just wanted to make a point, or he just wants to get off mute. But if you could do that, that would be great.
I believe he has to hit star six.
Yeah. Neil, thank you so much. Your passion is infectious. And so look forward to seeing where this goes, but thank you so much.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
Yes. Neil, this is John Delarata. I want to thank you for your... Hi, I want to thank you for that presentation. It was wonderful. Great history of Metroplex. And I'm very glad that you noted the Ellis Hospital and your first pillar as that becoming a medical center. I don't believe that they get their fair due. I have had some personal experience in that. Their cardiology department, their emergency room department is really fantastic, had a big hand in saving my dear wife's life. And they are really nationally known. I know they're very well-known at Strong Memorial Medical Center and their cardiology department. So I do want to thank you and thank the Ellis Hospital people as well.
I'll pass it on to Paul Milton and Marcy, who do a lot of stuff there and this team. Thank you, thank you. And thank you guys for doing the job you've done. You know, I've lived in Niskuna since 1941, 1941. And it's a different place today than it was then. But I congratulate you on the work that you've done and the hard time and effort that you put into doing what you do. I don't think most people really recognize the effort that you have to make to run your own lives and also do what you do. So hats off to you, those two ways. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this evening, Neil. Fantastic presentation. I can't wait to see all of what you just spoke about come to fruition. That will truly be so exciting. And the town of Niskuna is ready to partner with you for any help that you may need throughout this process.
It'll be a step at a time.
Great. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. I'm sure, you know, I know how busy you are, so.
Thank you for inviting me. And I think it's appropriate for me to check out. It's your business. And thank you so much for having me tonight. Good night.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Okay, we're now going to move on to the public hearings. Will the clerk please call the first public hearing?
A public hearing regarding implementing New York stretch code by commending Chapter 75 of the Town Code of the Town of Niskuna entitled Building Construction.
Thank you. The first public hearing is now open. I did not receive any emailed contributions from public hearing that were wished to be read. If there's anyone joining from the line tonight who'd like to speak during the first public hearing, you can do so now. And last call, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing, you can do so now. And I'm now going to close the first public hearing. Will the clerk please call the second public hearing?
A public hearing regarding a sewer extension on Pierce Road.
Thank you. The second public hearing is now open. I did not receive any emailed communications that were wished to be read during the second public hearing. But if anyone is joining us on the line tonight who would like to speak during the second public hearing, you can do so now. And last call on the second public hearing. If you would like to speak, you can do so now. Okay, seeing no one willing to speak, we will close the second public hearing. We'll move on to Privilege of the Floor. Privilege of the Floor is now open. In kind, I also did not receive any emailed submissions to be read during Privilege of the Floor. But if there is someone who's joining us this evening who would like to speak, you can do so now. And last call on Privilege of the Floor. If you would like to speak, you can do so now. Okay, seeing no one left willing to speak, I'm going to close Privilege of the Floor. We're going to move on to our committee reports. And we will begin with Councilwoman Jaquith.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Community programs update. Easter Bunny Drive-through event was on April 2nd. It's a big success. Almost 300 Easter eggs were given away and all the children seemed really thrilled. I attended and it was a joy to start the day. Witnessed all those smiling faces, for sure. The summer program book and registration is open. Registrations have been flying in. All the programs will be run at reduced numbers and we will be abiding by COVID protocols. Driving range is going to open this Saturday, May 1st. It'll be open daily from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It has a fully automated ball dispenser on site and accepts credit cards, debit cards, et cetera. No cash is available to be used there. Summer concert series is set for the year. Will begin on June 13th and will run through August 12th. There'll be a tab on the main webpage that has been created entitled Summer Events, which will have a monthly calendar with all concerts and events going on at the gazebo. And CF grants, Niskuna Community Foundation grant applications have been submitted. We've applied for new rims and backboards for the basketball courts at Blatnick and benches to flank the Bachi Ball Courts coming this summer near the Ruck Senior Center Pavilion. With respect to senior center updates, in-house exercise is now available along with continued Zoom classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Three Bridge Group, Bridge and Card Groups continue to come Tuesdays and Thursdays for in-person play. The Gershon's lunches continue to be very successful. Staff remains, we're still offering them through a drive-through option, which continues to be very popular and appreciated. On May 22nd, there'll be a defensive driving class offered at the senior center. And staff and visitors alike would like to extend their thanks and appreciation for the work done by our highway and park crews at the senior center. Those attending the Earth Day and Arbor Day seedling giveaway events were treated to some beautiful outdoor spaces and to new sassafras trees. So thank you to our highway and parks crews for that. With respect to highway and parks, highway crews have been working on resident request lists, spring cleanup, tree stumps, et cetera. Washout sweepers will begin on a regular schedule in the next few weeks. Random yard waste pickup is going well, large volume of debris. A lot of people out there doing their spring cleanups. Crews have been getting equipment ready for the summer season. And there is also a small crew working on a new parking lot at Blatnick Park to serve our residents' needs there. It's going to be a great addition. Parks crews have also begun park cleanups and work on landscaping on our many, many parks, as Neil mentioned, and facilities around town and otherwise preparing equipment for the summer season. Park facilities bathrooms are being prepared for the seasonal. Those will be open 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM throughout the season. In some, all town of Niskuna staff are working very hard to serve our residents. So we're very thankful for their service. Quickly, on the Farmers Market Committee, that continues to meet regularly. We're preparing for our 15-week season, which will start on July 10th. While this is intended to be a community event, we expect it'll generate revenue beyond the break-even point. It remains a true collaboration among various organizations in Niskuna, including NCAP, the Niskuna Co-op, and NCF. I'm very thankful to be part of the organizers working on this. Lastly, this past Friday, April 23rd, there was another rally held at Town Hall in support of LGBTQIA students who were bullied and harassed. I want to continue to commend our young adults for their activism. I feel very confident they are going to change this world for the better. I would also like to extend my thanks to the Niskuna Police Department for their quiet presence at this peaceful event. The next Highway, Parks and Recreation Meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 5th at 8:15 AM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to Councilman Delarata.
Thank you. Regarding the Economic Development Committee, we will meet this Friday at 8:30. I believe it is still virtual. The Rivers Ledge Project is progressing very nicely. I was down there last week and they are really going full bore. That's a very exciting project for the town of Niskuna. Also, there are kayak rentals now that are available at Aqueduct Park. So that is a nice addition. Folks can use the dock and kayak down to the Mohawk Harbor that Mr. Golub finally spoke of and back and throughout the city of Schenectady and town of Niskuna. And also, it was Arbor Day and I was unable to attend, but I understand that went very well. And I do want to give my thanks to all the volunteers that worked on that. That was really a wonderful event. And in closing, we hope to get some more members for our committees. I know we still have vacancies on several of our committees, so we will hopefully get those filled as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're now going to move on to Councilwoman McPartland.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I think as many people have seen, our utility bills hit at the end of April and they are due at the end of May. So those have gone out and we are accepting them at Town Hall in the mail slot or mailed in. So I thank everybody for getting those out. The water crews are continuing to perform the annual hydrant flushing. You could check the town website to see when your neighborhood is being done. It's just right there. There's a nice map and there's also a list by street. So you've got a lot of information right there on the town website. The water crews are continuing to make their way through the town, working on pavement and lawn damage that resulted from any water repairs that had to take place over the winter. And the water and sewer crews are out there working to inspect all the manholes, the valves, the hydrants, everything that they need to maintain as we certainly go into a much busier time of year for everyone. I want to thank Councilman Delarata for mentioning the kayaks. I am thrilled to have the opportunity to work on that project again. Last year, it was gangbusters. There was not one remaining open slot by the end of the season. Every single reservation was taken. Last year, the kayaks were part of the staycation program. We were able to be one of four communities throughout the state that were chosen by the Canal Corp. to have a free kayak program, a free bike program. This year, we're not as lucky, but it is a low-cost, very economical, a really fun project and program right there at our own Aqueduct Park. Two kayaks for three hours for $60. I don't think it could be beat. I don't really know, but it looks like it's going to be fantastic. And already, the reservations are through the roof. I think they're working to get bicycles also, engage and have a bike rack over there as well. So it looks like all the fun things that we were able to accomplish last summer will be back again right at our own Aqueduct Park this summer. So that's all I have, Madam Supervisor.
Great, thank you very much. We're now going to move on to Councilman McPartland.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Police and Public Safety met on April 6th. As everyone knows, the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Report passed the Town Board and then was sent off to the state. As part of that, the department's mission statement has been recommended to be changed and amended to include the phrase "public safety" as recommended by that collaborative committee. The department also resumed public service programs, including installation of car seats in motor vehicles, fingerprinting of citizens if they need those, and assisting with motor vehicle lockouts. So our department is now open for those services. Fleet and equipment, we have put... The bids were received for two new patrol cars, which have been ordered by Ford. We are getting three quotes for the vehicle fit-up. We will be taking equipment off of old vehicles and older police cars and moving them to the new police cars, so it should save the town some money. The building lock system at Town Hall is approximately about 90% complete. I was speaking with the deputy chief over the weekend. At some point, everyone may be getting new fobs. We're not sure when that might occur, but something to be aware of so that they can be better kept track of. Training. All the supervisors attended a six-hour virtual accreditation manager training program provided by the DCIS. Detective Kafaga has completed a two-week evidence technician training program conducted by Zone 5. And the chief reports that the Police 1 training is continuing for all sworn officers. Also, we've got scheduled the spring firearms training and CPR training for all the members of the department. There will be a county-wide active shooter training at some point in the fall. And Niskuna will be involved in that and it may even be here in Niskuna. Citizen issues, we always talk about those at our committee meetings. We're still working with the people on Wyoming. We're also talking to the Highway Department about possibility of a yield sign or stop sign in that neighborhood. Done a traffic study in the Fieldstone neighborhood with a lot of volume in that area on that road. We've increased our enforcement there. Dean Street and Grand Boulevard, same sort of thing, lots of traffic. We increase our patrols. We've done vehicle speed studies there. We don't see any real speed problems, but we do see a lot of volume in those areas. Community events. Want to thank the Police Department for helping with the annual Easter parade. Also, want to thank the Police Department and especially Sergeant Twitty for his help with Drug Takeback Day this last Saturday. We filled 12 boxes, 286 pounds. We do this in conjunction with NCAP. I want to thank them and all their volunteers. They had a great number of people there. It went extremely smooth. It was a beautiful day. And again, this is a great thing for our community to get these medications and these drugs off the streets, not in the landfill, not going to our wastewater treatment plant. So great job for everyone that participated in that. We talked about grants for body cams. The chief and deputy chief have looked into that. At present, they don't see that there's any available, but they are going to continue to look for any type of grant money that might be available for body cameras. The legislative report has told you, they've had 10 to 12 virtual cases. They've won some in person. They are expecting a lot when the court does finally open up with possible evictions and other items, which can't be brought to the court at the present time. Fire Department, the chief from the Fire Department reported that the gas pump now at District 1 River Road Station is up and fully operating. We're getting some word from the Mist debate committee that it appears that that is going to be taking place possibly in August. It's a different type of event with possible multiple parades. So we're just going to keep everyone posted on that as they keep us posted on what may be going there. And our next meeting will be May 4th at 8:00 AM, virtually. Thank you.
Council Supervisor, may I just make one other point? This just in from the IT Department, they wanted us to mention this. Councilwoman Jaquith was kind enough to mention the calendar of events on the front page of the website or access to it on the front page of the website. There is also a calendar, so you could see what's going on at each individual park, the pavilion rentals and things like that. That's an updated feature of the website that just started for summer. And we're thrilled that the IT Department was able to get that accomplished. So thank you to Seth. I just also want to mention, because Councilman McPartland mentioned it, we have applied for a grant for the body cams. Ismael Alom, the supervisor, and I worked with the chief and the deputy chief. And I want to thank Councilman Partland for also helping oversee that. We did apply for a grant for the body cams and hopefully it'll come in. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that concludes our committee reports. I'm going to move on to the supervisors' report. I will be brief. This is mainly a COVID protocol update. So this Thursday, April 29th, I will be issuing new guidance on resuming our in-person Town Board meetings as well as the reopening of Town Hall to the general public. Currently, Town Hall is open to the public, but it's by appointment only. And that can be done, and still will be able to be done, Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, beginning Monday, May 17th. So that's... Beginning Monday, May 17th, so it's Monday, May 17th, Town Hall will be fully reopened to the public. So if you are a visitor, would like to visit, there's business you need to transact at Town Hall, you will now no longer need to make an appointment ahead of time. Upon entry, visitors will be required to have their temperature screened by a touch-free thermometer. You will also be required to complete a self-addestation form, which can also be completed on your very own cell phone by scanning a QR code. So it will make the process completely touch-free. So again, if you are worried about coming to Town Hall, have no fear. We have made the processes touch-free and safe as possible. Regarding resuming board meetings in person, we are scheduled to hold our next Finance and Agenda Meeting in person in the Town Hall boardroom. So that will be Tuesday, May 11th. Our Finance Committee meetings at 6:00 p.m., our Agenda meetings at 7:00 p.m. So those will be in person in the Town Boardroom once again. Attendance at those meetings will be limited on a space-available basis. So there will be further guidance on that. That will be forthcoming, exactly how many seats we will have available. We have all of the seats spaced out like they were last summer when we briefly came back to in-person meetings. And so we will have all that set up the same. And we will have a similar process if you would like to attend a meeting. Same thing, that you will have your temperature screened, you will file a self-addestation form as well. So again, the resuming of in-person meetings, that announcement will be forthcoming. We'll begin with the Town Board first, measure that success, and then we will move on to our other committees and boards following that. So likely, those will begin up in earnest again in June at the soonest. But again, next month for May, the Town Board, we will be back. So I look forward to seeing everybody in person again. All right, that concludes my supervisor's report. We're now going to move on to our resolutions. We're going to begin with Resolution 2021-89, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving certain vegetarian implications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. I don't know if anybody else is hearing it. I'm hearing a little bit of background noise, so if we could all just take a moment and mute. Thank you. Next resolution is 2021-90. Councilwoman Jakewood, will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a member to the Task Force on Racial Equity and Justice for the Town Niskiuna.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I was on this with her tonight. I just wanted to welcome her and thank her. I was interested in serving on the task force last year when we took her screen. Again, you mentioned volume. If somebody could turn off their audio microphone. Ayah is a Union College student, a poet, an activist, a leader. She has shown a great commitment to this work. She was involved in the collaborative work, and she's committed to the work of the task force moving forward. I really look forward to her passion and her energy as part of this wonderful group of residents. So I just wanted to thank her and wish her Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. We want to welcome you aboard. Our next resolution, 2021-91, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution regarding reconciliation of corporate utility rents for the fourth quarter of 2020.
Thank you. Can I get a second? I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-92, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a license agreement for use of stocker fields.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-93, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting quotes for the purchase of seed, mulch, fertilizer, and spreading services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-94, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing seasonal employees and hiring independent contractors in the Office of Community Programs and Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. So before I move on, Seth, can you hear that echo that I'm hearing as well?
He can. So it's Michelle, so he can't mute her.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah. Michelle, if you can mute yourself in between readings, that would help.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll figure it out. We'll keep going. Next resolution, 2021-25, sponsored by Councilwoman Delarada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution adopting a local law that amends Chapter 75 of the Town Code of the Town Niskiuna entitled Building Construction.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-96, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw and Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing an individual to the Board of Assessment Review.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Supervisor. I would just like to thank first, Taryn Webster. She served the town very well for many years on the Board of Assessment Review. I loved working with her. She's just really somebody who is a tireless worker. She always puts the town first. I was able to recruit her for this board, so I was very sorry to see that she needed to step aside for a little while as her daughter gets ready to go to college and just all of those things. I am confident she will be back in one way, shape, or form, just because she always puts Niskiuna first in everything that she does. So I want to thank her. And now, I want to thank Jamie Rogowski. I know many of you know her. Jamie is a lifelong Niskiuna, and she is very active in things that go on at the high school. She's this year, I think, running everything that has to do with this senior class that, you know, they have a very different year. But Jamie is one of those people in town that just gets things done, and I'm thrilled that she's finding time in her schedule now that her daughter's leaving to go off for school, and both her girls will be out of the house, and she's finding a little more time for her volunteer work in addition to living here her whole life and just really being so very invested in this community. She is one of the premier real estate attorneys in the capital region. She knows more about this kind of work than any of us could ever dream. She is exactly the kind of person you hope to recruit when you have a board position like this open. The town assessor, Eric Amberger, said when I told him that we finally got her, it was a big get. He said, "I feel so lucky. This is a gift. I'm very fortunate." And that's the kind of person that Jamie Rogowski is. I know she'll really, she'll dig into the work. I think we have an outstanding, outstanding, hard-working Board of Assessment Review with an outstanding assessor, and Jamie will fit right in, and she will be able to take us to the next level in all of the things that are going on in a field that's evolving and changing along with our town. So I want to thank Jamie. I want to thank Taryn. I want to thank all of you for considering this nomination, and I'm looking forward to getting Jamie into Town Hall and getting her to work.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Yes.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-97, sponsored by Councilwoman Delarada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution proclaiming April 24th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Town Niskiuna.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'll try to keep it brief because I know the echo is killing everybody. But I do want to thank everyone, our tree council, our employees, and our great staff in the building department. They did a wonderful job on the tree giveaway event on Saturday. We learned, under Lessons Learned, we learned to move it out of Town Hall because it is so popular, and we blocked up all kinds of traffic last year. I think it went very, very smoothly, and I'm very grateful to everybody who came out on Saturday. And I'm loving seeing the pictures of everybody with their tree, picking up their tree, planting their tree. So thank you to everyone, from those who helped make it happen to those who participated and lined up your car and got there in time and you were able to get a tree. So thank you to everybody, and certainly our fearless leader, Laura Robertson, who guides us through all of these events so beautifully. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-98, sponsored by Councilwoman Delarada and Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting a donation of a music historical chest for the display at Town Hall.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I saw the chest today. I met with Joel over at the property. He brought me into the home that he's refurbishing there on the corner of Shannon Boulevard and Route 7, and he showed me the chest, and it is just everything that we would hope it would be. I'm thrilled that he's donating it directly to the town and the way that he's gone about this. And the generosity of this gift is really something that would be much appreciated. I know it is by me. I know it is by Councilwoman Delarada and all of us on the Town Board and the Supervisor's office. It's really a wonderful gift to our community, and he's already, I already have some ideas of seeing it, how we can display it and what we can do with it. But it's a very special piece, and it will be right at home at Town Hall.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-99, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting resignation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-100, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution regarding a fence easement on Dean Street.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Here.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
And this resolution passes. We have five ayes. Okay. Next resolution. Thank you. And that resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-101, sponsored by Councilwoman Delarada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to accept certain lands in the overlooked park subdivision.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-102, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to authorize the superintendent of highways to enter and execute extensions to contracts for landscaping and maintenance of town-owned property.
Thank you. I will second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delarada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-103, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving a assignment of fund balance for 2020.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This was a last-minute add to the package, so if anyone needs additional time for review or more in-depth discussion, I would welcome anyone who's given up this time. Saying no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delorada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-104, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the use of private hydrant agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delorada. Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-105, sponsored by Supervisor Syed. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution terminating previous implemented orders and policies related to COVID-19.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delorada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-106, sponsored by Councilwoman Delorada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the amendment of certain building department fees.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delorada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. Last resolution, 2021-107, sponsored by Councilwoman Jakewood. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing grounds maintenance workers.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Delorada.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jakewood.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Aye.
Councilwoman McPartland.
Aye.
Supervisor Syed.
Yes.
Five ayes.
And this resolution passes. So I'm now going to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Public Officers Law, Section 105, subsection E, to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now going to enter into executive session. At the conclusion of executive session, we will take no further business from the floor, and we will be adjourned for the evening. Those that should be staying for executive session are town board members, the town attorney, deputy supervisor.